Okay. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Town of Southbridge Joint General Government Subcommittee Town Council Meeting, Monday, September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven P. M. We're immediately following the D. P. W. It is seven eleven P. M. We're in the Veterans Room. The meeting is being recorded by audio and video. Agenda item number one called to order. Agenda item number two is roll call. Counselor Dow.
Here.
Counselor Marquetti. Citizen Member, Mrs. Clemens. And Citizen Member Kelly is excused. He is away. Not there's really excused or unexcused at all. But here we go. Agenda number three, consider and accept the General Government Subcommittee meeting minutes of A. July seventeenth. Because just someone fill me in. We don't actually push them through a subcommittee, or do we?
Yeah, these are ours. They're not councils' jobs. You don't recommend it?
Very good. All right, so so moved by Clemens and second by Dow for agenda three. Okay, does anybody have any discussion on the first set of minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item three B is for August second. Consider and accept the General Government meeting minutes of August second. Dow's move, Counselor Dow. Seconded by Counselor Marquetti. Any discussion on the second set of minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number four, review town manager's appointment of Manny Silva as interim principal assessor, effective immediately on a part-time basis at a rate of a hundred dollars per hour. Entertain a motion to the town council to recommend confirmation or take any action therefore.
So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Marquetti. Well, Jack, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you.
Go, please.
So as you're aware, we have no principal assessor. We have not had a principal assessor for a number of months. The office being currently being serviced with Jasmine and Francine in that office. We have not really gotten any applicants for the assessor's job. So Charlie, former interim manager of Blanche, had given me the name of Manny Silver. I've spoken to Manny a couple of times. He came out and spoke with myself in Newark. Was here this evening about providing some interim assessors functions. He's willing to do the work for one to two days a week as needed, depending on what is going on. He has a lot of experience. And as an assessor, thirty-four years plus. The former assessor had left us a list of ongoing issues going on with the assessors department. Just normal things that have to go on, such as some, we have some appellate tax bureau, things that need to be addressed. Then we'll be working on setting the recaps in tax rates. So we do definitely need a presence that has experience. He does have experience. We are looking at an individual in that office that wishes to become an assessor, that has just the very basic course to be an assessor, but would like to to work. And I did ask Mr. Silver if he would work with that individual to see about her ability to become a full-time assessor and work with training that as well. So my recommendation, I know a hundred dollars is a little steep, but that's what we're paying the assessors. That's the going rate for interim type people in these roles. However, he's not going to charge us for travel. He's not charging us for any phone calls or anything like that. Just when he's here, it'd be a hundred dollars an hour.
Just a quick question. Did you have a timeline for this sort of thing? I know this is effective immediately, but hopefully how long would you plan on keeping him around?
So I've talked to him. Again, we need to at least get through December and setting the tax rates and all that. We definitely have the money within our budget to be able to fund it as long as needed. I'm looking at the minimum right now of probably about six months.
Okay.
So that we can work first with the individual in the office to make sure that she has the understanding of what an assessor would be and work with Manny to see, yes, if that's the path she wants. And then work to develop an action plan to train her. The training for the assessors, usually this typical one in fall and one in spring. I came on after that, so I couldn't send her to the training in the fall. So the spring training will be the next training. So it's very difficult to recruit right now, not just for Southbridge, but for every community. There's a number of assessors that are moving to various, so they're picking up and moving from one town to the next. So ours that left, replaced, one had only been in Palmer for a year. She left Palmer to go to Lock Meadow. Ours went to Palmer. So they are moving around. So we're going to look, hopefully this will be the plan to train an individual that wants to do the job, works for us already, resides in the town, and has the ability to pursue this line of profession.
And before I ask for discussion, just so I'm aware, and I don't want to get sidetracked, but yes or no, the the curbside collection bills are going to come out of the assessor's office in the end, correct?
As of right now, we do have, I know it's on the agenda here because we passed it the other night, but we will start with the Collins Center to determine the best plan. But one or two already comes out of the department, so it would make sense that does.
So at least if if this person gets hired and they're all working together to move forward and it's an important position coming up in the next six months anyway.
It's a point, yes, for the next year.
Okay, awesome. Does anybody have any discussion? Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair to you. You said that's the rate we pay anyway, the hundred dollar for.
That's the going rate for use of interim positions.
We're not like giving them extra to.
No.
We're not giving or giving whatever, any benefits or any.
No benefits.
No insurance, nothing.
And treasurer collector's rate is that right now, plus expenses.
That's it.
Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, through you, a hundred dollars an hour is pretty steep. Probably the highest paid person at that rate, higher than you. So I think it's too much. When I look at the Schedule One, correct me if I'm wrong, but the assessor makes about forty-two dollars an hour, I believe. So it just seems to me, if you want to hire somebody at a hundred dollars an hour, which I think is too high, you're doing it backwards. You should probably change the schedule first. Put an interim assessor in the schedule and a hundred dollars an hour. And then when you do hire an assessor, change it back to the assessor position that we have now. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote yesterday that said a hundred dollars an hour until the change is made. Thank you.
Counselor Dow, you have more to add?
First one to Counselor Marquetti. When you need the file, you got to catch it in your hand. We have no one here. You can't find anyone to work. I think now, at that moment, you need that gentleman or whoever, Sally Manny is that girl or guy, I don't know. So we need the assessor to be able to move with the town forward. I think we pay the price by hiring people who's low rate. They don't have no experience. They come here, we try to teach them, and then they find a job, couple of dollars extra, they leave. We're already paying that price. And I think we should accept it to move forward and then we can look to adjust that rate the way you you know, you should adjust it or whatever. If we can find somebody for forty-two dollar.
Chairman Lozo.
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Marquetti. It is a steep number. But we're in the process of rewriting how we handle our finance department. I think it's going to be an interim position. So for myself, I'm in favor of like a realignment that we're trying to work on. Is a master plan that it's not just one position with a hundred dollar per hour. I think you're going to look at how we deal with our assessor, our accounts office, and our treasurer's office. And to build to what the final outcome is, it's going to be expensive. I'm telling you right now, it's going to be expensive. And I'm not liking it, but I'm going to vote for it because we need to get the job done. You know, when the phone calls come and people are not getting paid, like road jobs and busting, you know, I'm not ready to sit there and say, I'm going to put my hands, I'm going to sit on my hands and get the parts. Now, that doesn't, that that doesn't look right. It doesn't work right. So I think going forward, I do agree, not disagree with the the previous speaker, but the bottom line come down to this, in sitting down and asking how to turn this around, this is part of the blueprint. Thank you.
Did Counselor Shenyu hold your hand up?
I understand what Counselor Marquetti is saying, but I think if you look at the big picture of Schedule One and the Schedule Two, whatever we have in schedules, doesn't reflect the actual true value of the per hour. It doesn't include benefit packages and stuff, insurance, all those. So if you add the benefit package, you're not that far away probably from that hundred bucks an hour. Because you've got insurance that costs, I think, an employee, what, twelve hundred for family care a month? And so it's so you just just insurance alone, then you go sick leave and you got vacation time. So you add all the benefit package that the employee has on top of the schedule, that hundred bucks isn't that far away.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Shenyu. Mrs. Clemens.
Thank you. So first, at first, look at this, I too shocked by the number. And we do have a schedule, and the schedule's an A. eight is the principal assessor. And an A. five is the treasurer collector. I'm trying to think what was the other. That's what you guys were referring to. Financ- uh, finance director actually is A. three. So A. three going down up there, because they get the, that's right, they get the stipend on top. So there's a big difference in pay from an A. eight to an A. five plus an A. three, which whatever that makes it, because he gets the stipend. And I, the value of the finance department, the assessor's very important as well, obviously. We've got to get our money from the taxpayers. And we need to know what the values are. We need to know. We need to get the water and sewer bills out. We need to do a lot of things. But it's it's not, it's not equitable. You can't, it's not apples for apples. Some of the things that bother me, I I looked at the gentleman's letter. He seems to have a lot of experience. However, you know, he says for this service, I'll be looking at a hundred dollars an hour. That's nice, you know, looking at a hundred. Did we counter? Did we try anything? Or do we just accept a hundred dollars an hour? I find that to be a valuable tool to counter with somebody. Understand the benefits, and you're right, bumps it up to another, you know, it's probably more like seventy-five, eighty dollars an hour when you when you add the benefits and such. It is a part-time job for this person, so this person's getting the best of both worlds. It's a part-time and it's top dollars though they were full-time. I have a hard, I have a really hard time swallowing the hundred dollars an hour. We could look back and and see some of the reasons our assessor left so quickly, but that's water under the bridge. We have to move forward. As to the trash and the trash going inside of there, I'm glad you guys voted. I guess I didn't see that either. I've got to start watching your meetings more often. I was wondering why Francine Farland wasn't on the agenda, but apparently that's why Francine Farland didn't need to be on the agenda, I guess? Because you took it up at council for the trash? Going, did, is that what the vote was? I just have to ask that question because she wasn't on the agenda. I'm going through the minutes. I knew she wanted to be on the agenda to talk about the trash. My point to the reason I bring that up is because part of that trash plan included hiring an individual to work alongside everybody else in that office. It wasn't saying that the assessor was handling the trash bills. It was going to be an additional person, extra help for that department, coming out of the cost of the trash plan. So just saying, and when that trash plan got up and going, that extra person probably didn't need to be a full-timer, would be able to use half their time or so helping out with the assessor's office. I just wanted to point that out for clarification. So it wasn't that the assessor had to do all the job of the trash, additional trash billing, because that was built into the cost of the trash billing, at least from the communities I went to. And that was the proposal that was supposed to have been sent up from what I understand. So anyway, if you could clarify anything I said, that'd be helpful.
Well, no. First off, I understand a hundred dollars an hour is tough to swallow. I don't want to pay a hundred dollars an hour. However, I walked into a finance department that had no treasurer collector outside of an interim that we were having one to one and a half days a week, no assessor, no finance director, an accountant that's only been here two years with very limited experience. I don't want to pay a hundred dollars an hour. If I could say to the individual, which I I think has the talent to be an assessor, if I if I could say tomorrow, okay, you're my assessor, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that for the town because it wouldn't be good for her, for her success, because she'd be frustrated because she doesn't have, she has very little experience. This gives me an opportunity to bring in a very experienced individual in, to work with this individual and develop her so that we can have a homegrown assessor that wants to be here. That's the first goal. And I understand that is the going rate for these things in my studies of calling around and saying, what are we paying for interims? I don't want to pay it. That's what we have. The guy has thirty-four years experience. You would put him on a salary scale. We wouldn't start him at eighty-nine. We'd be paying him ninety-six thousand at the start. So. His belief is that he probably would only be here one day a week. And then when it was busier, he might be here two days a week. But he would have, right now Francine is calling us and saying, I have this issue. What do I do? I'm not an assessor. We don't have an assessor here. What do I do? Oh, we have sixty-one A. letters that have to go out for the assessors to office. How do I do it? I need somebody with experience that can stack tomorrow, that will be able to answer these questions and make the assessment department work for us. In regards to the trash and Francine, we have the consultant starting Friday that's going to come in, that's going to work. So they're going to discuss with us what software we need, what do we have to implement, what the personnel may look like. That's being done by the Collins Center that we passed last Monday night. So we have that working. So that's why Francine's not here right now. We have that working on a different avenue. And the people that they're putting in place are people that are experienced with munis. We all know that munis is another issue. This individual's an expert on munis. That's all his work with is munis. So if, and I've said this to a couple of other people, if if we have a treasurer collector that had been hit full-time with a lot of experience, an accountant and a finance director, I might say, okay, I could maybe work with the assessor on a little bit more and not have to go this route. But it really is to make sure that we get everything right.
Do you just want to follow up then?
Yeah, here's Stone.
Can you, thank you. Could, are you going to keep the, I realize you want to train whichever, whoever and all that. I I guess I could be more accepting of it. Are you going to keep this open? Are you keeping an active search on out there just in case?
Website right now.
I just want to make sure that you're actively still seeking a, a, even though we could homegrow somebody.
Right.
You still, experience is experience. You're trying to bring this guy, you know, this guy for a hundred bucks. If we can find somebody like this person who wants a full-time job.
Right.
Then are we going to, are we going to keep that open? I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Absolutely, so.
You know, we're not saying this guy, you got six months for sure.
No, it really was, one, one is, okay, I can have a conversation with the individual and say, oh, yeah, you look like you have experience. But by bringing an experienced person in to work with her side by side, we get a sense and feedback, yes, we'll go this avenue and it's worth doing it. And she may have enough training at that point, once we get past recap and all that, issues in December. Right, we do the 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 tax recaps and do our end-of-the-year report and all that. And when things are less busy in the office, that we could say to the individual, yeah, now you can go to training.
No, no, I just want to, I I want to keep all options on the table.
No, all options.
I don't want to be only focused on homegrown.
No, not at all.
When we might bypass somebody that could take this place of this person at a hundred dollars, you know, and come in at a reason, you know, a more reasonable rate, but that is also willing to work and stay here.
We're doing both avenues, not only with this department, but even planning department. I know that's not on the agenda, but it's still, it's the same conversation. We have interim planner that's in place. We have the job posted. We have an individual that might want to be a planner that's working in that department now.
Right, but we're not worried about a hundred dollar an hour, so.
Yeah. Well, no, Ken Coman, we're paying, how much we're paying Ken Coman on agenda? Probably a hundred twenty-five through plan of, planning commission for interim planner, because there's no planners.
We went forever without a planner. Never mind, that's another subject. I won't go off track.
Okay.
They brought it up.
That's good. Are you all set then?
Uh, yeah, I'm all set.
Okay. Counselor Lozo.
Can I, can I just say, I agree, all options are always open. If somebody walks in the door and that's experienced, we're we're on it. I mean, our HR department, even with D. P. W. positions, you know, the second in command and this one, that one. All options are open. We're trying, exhausting all avenues to try and get somebody that's most experienced for it. But when you get somebody and they come here for a short time and they leave, you've got to keep the homegrown option open as you're looking for the right one to come in. So I agree that, and I'm I'm not saying, I, as much as I agree, as much as that's what we're doing. We're doing whatever it takes right now to hold the finance department together and to advance to the future of reorganizing as far as the players and who does what. So we can get into this, wrap our head around munis, instead of being one town out of three hundred and fifty towns, they don't want to use munis. So, or they'll know how to use munis. And I'm not a tech guy, but we're looking, and we're keeping all options open. We're not buckling ourselves down and getting cornered. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other discussion? Mr. Buxton?
Uh, yes, just so the committee is aware. The curbside program also has a twenty-one D. issue that the twenty-one D. tickets weren't being attached as a municipal need. Francine has also commented about the.
Does this have something to do with hiring an assessor?
It sounds like he's talking about the assessor's office and needs of the assessor's office, so.
Curbside, the curbside issue. Francine also needs I. T. support to, to the filling. And we're six months away.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Buxton. I just wanted to weigh in a little. You'll hear me say this about things in the future, but when it comes to making sure that we can fix the finance problems that we've alluded to tonight, and and people can argue if we spent money good in the past or bad in the past. But here we are now trying to build the foundation of finance in the town, and the assessor's office is a very important part of it. And we need to be able to have all-star players come here if they want to work here. You know, a person like this, who's not even going to work that very much during the week, is going to help the whole finance team fixing the books, organizing the billing system. If the curbside ends up going through the assessor's office, I mean, this person, obviously, we have our options open. But we will be able to use this individual to create that homegrown employee that wants to work here. So while we have the options, this person is going to be giving us an awful lot. They will create us that long term if that's the person who ends up getting to that point in the future. But Mrs. Clemens, last year, I I do remember at the podium, one of the first citizens that came up last year that made me feel passionate about these things, as you said, I believe, why can't Southbridge have nice things too?
Southbridge deserves.
Southbridge deserves nice.
Southbridge deserves better.
It does. And and if this person wants to come here.
Well, let's hope they're.
I I I think that, well, with the thirty-four years of experience is where I'm I'm really going off of that. And and I just think that while they want to have, our citizens deserve the finance department foundation creation over the next six months to a year. That is where we have, if we're going to spend, pay a premium anywhere, we we have to get a handle on this. So I I personally am going to support this this item. And no, a hundred dollars an hour isn't great, but I I mean, I'm I'm supporting it. Does anybody else have any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Three to one with Counselor Marquetti opposed. Okay, moving on. Agenda item number five, vote to recommend a town council amendment to Schedule One, Town of Southbridge Classification and Compensation Plan, effective July first, two thousand and twenty-three. Change H. R. Director slash Assistant Town Manager to Director of Human Resources, A. nine.
So moved.
Dow, Marquetti, second, okay. Mr. Manager?
This was simply, the town council has spoken a lot of clear that it's going to be a direct, a H. R. Director, Assistant Town Manager, so it is just the Director of Human Resources at the same step, A. nine.
Very good.
Reviewing salaries from Charlton, Oxford, Webster, Sturbridge. That A. nine classification is right in line with those area towns.
Okay. Does anybody have any discussion? Counselor Marquetti.
So when this decision was created, H. R. Director slash Assistant Town Manager, they were given an A. nine designation because of the extra duties as an Assistant Town Manager. So now you're removing the Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager portion of it, but you're keeping the salary the same. That's, that's my question.
Again, because that A. nine is the, A. nine salary schedule is eighty-six thousand to ninety-seven thousand. Charlton Human Resources pays ninety thousand twenty-seven. Oxford pays ninety-two thousand eighty. Webster pays ninety-eight four. And Sturbridge is at ninety-two thousand. So they're right, we're right in the ballpark for H. R. Director alone. They're not Assistant Town Managers there. They're H. R. Directors.
All right, well, in the words of several of my colleagues, we're not Charlton, we're not Webster, we're not Sturbridge. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. President. Yes, sir.
But if we're going to recruit individuals, I think we have to be within the salary range. And certainly when we hire people, we look at what their experience is, but we have to be somewhat in the range. And I'll just leave it at that.
That's a good point, Mr. Manager. Mr. Counselor Lozo.
I just want to say one thing. We were ready to spend fifty thousand dollars for a salary study. And our new town manager does salary study by making phone calls and just getting the job done. To allow you to what the other towns are going to do, are we going to be competitive? Now, the Town Manager slash H. R., I voted against it when I did it. I think this is a good thing to go back to pure H. R. The finance is always going to be discussed. Since this happened, now we're going to have to work on being competitive at the same time. What do you want to do? It's up to the councils, what you're conscious.
Okay, thank you. I know Counselor Dow had his hand up before.
Southbridge, but I'm all, but I'm from Charlton, but I'm from Oxford, but I'm from Dudley, but I'm from Sturbridge. We're Southbridge. We should be on the top line. And this is what we being facing in the past. We hire people in a cheap rate and look the mess they left us with. I think time to to clean up and move forward and look for a better future for Southbridge. I know where you come from regarding the money, but you want to drive, you you can die or you want to drive Mercedes. That's up to you. Thank you.
Okay, I saw Mrs. Clemens.
Yeah, thanks. You can just do citizen.
Citizen member.
Business thing is just getting.
Well, all right.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
So to to some points back and forth here, you guys are hilarious, really. But the big problem, of course, as we all know, is that H. R. Director should have never been Assistant Town Manager, which was bestowed upon by council because the last town manager didn't want to have to do the H. R. stuff or whined about the areas of stuff that needed to be done that managers have been doing for years here. So that was the first mistake of many, but that was, that was a big mistake there. So going back to just straight H. R. makes a lot more sense. And not abdicating the duties according to charter from the town manager makes a lot more sense as well to me, to this, to this voter. But anyway, I, and I applaud Jack for for making those calls. It's not something new. When I wanted to know snowplow overtime, I called fifteen different communities to find out what their overtime was and brought that back to our previous D. P. W. Director. So you, it is a good thing to have forward thinking and to initiative, initiative. So I applaud him for his initiative in in making the calls, because people will talk to you. You don't have to pay fifty thousand dollars. What else? Salary range? Yeah, I guess it depends what you're going to do with it. We don't know what the pay, do we know what the pay officially is going to be yet? No, but anyway. I think we need H. R. We we found that out the hard way. We did not, we were not compliant in so many areas. So I think we definitely need to continue with an H. R. Department as such. So you've got to do what you've got to do.
Okay, thank you, Citizen Member Clemens. Counselor Shenyu, you had your hand. You're okay?
I'm good.
Anybody else? All right, well, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Three to one. Marquetti opposed. Counselor Marquetti opposed, okay. Moving on, agenda item number six, vote to recommend the town council the changes in the job description for Assistant Town Manager slash Director of Human Resources to Director of Human Resources, A. nine.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Manager?
We just reviewed the areas that had the Assistant Town Manager, specific Town Manager type duties, and made it Human Resources.
Okay. Any discussion? Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. When I look at the functions of an H. R. Director, sometimes I mean, I look at this and I say, what are you going to do? Because it seems like this H. R. Director is doing everything here. That's my question. There's an awful lot in here for the H. R. Director to be doing.
Well. Well...
All right, so... The specialty things that HR has to do, such as onboarded processes, um, making sure the laws are followed, handling the insurance, handling, uh, at least the...
Confidential documents.
The processing of people that apply for jobs and setting up interviews and vetting individuals so that we can have interviews. I'll be the first to admit that sometimes you're naive of what an actual Town Manager does until you sit in that seat. And I can tell you that from the day I walk in, if I didn't have Nora in the HR Department right now, I wouldn't get anything else done, such as, uh, making sure quotes are done, employee issues. A chief has an issue with an employee, that comes to me, I have to review that. So if you believe, I, I would, and I would say this with all due respect, 'cause I was a counselor here, I would have never thought about what goes into a day of the life of a Town Manager until the last three weeks that I've sat in the chair of a Town Manager. So to think that an individual, one individual can manage every single department and then make sure the day-to-day functions of HR, um, would be successful, to be successful, and make sure you're compliant with the laws, we would be naive. I'll just say that with all due respect. It is a definitely needed function within the Town Hall, and I know the individual that works in HR right now works just as hard as I do every day, that there's never anything that we're not doing all day long. So it is a valuable, valuable, uh, so perhaps thirty years ago, when there was less HR regulations from the state and federal government, maybe a Town Manager could've done that, but now, absolutely not.
So when I, but I see this as the HR Director sitting in on all interviews, recruiting, uh, overseeing, helping you with the budget, helping you with, uh, um, I, I understand the handling the benefits, and I think that that's basically what means someone to, to handle the, the benefits. But this person's gonna be doing a lot more than that, they're gonna be bargaining with the unions, helping you with bargaining units, um, helping you with, uh...
So let me just answer the bargain.
Shouldn't be.
Just, actually, well, when you talk about bargaining with units, that individual takes the contract and says, here's the contract, and these are the changes in the federal laws that we may have to consider, that it doesn't mean they're gonna sit there with the bargaining, but they are gonna have a sta- a, a, a seat at doing bargain. When you talk about budgets, they are gonna work on the budgets because, uh, we have step increases, they're gonna be the ones that evaluate who's on a step, who's, has to go up a step, and, and all that. So when you say budget, doesn't mean they're actually sitting there doing the budget, but they are assisting on that specific line item that they have to work to get us the information to provide a budget to the town. So that, that's, you know, I think, you look at it, it's like, okay, was it, no, it, there are specific tasks that they do to assist, make sure that, that process goes through. Okay, as far as interviewing, I've already had a conversation with Nora. My belief is this, that the job of the HR person is to get the, get the packets in of what, who's applying for the job and give them to the department heads, and the department heads are the ones that are gonna do the interviews, not HR Department. Their job is to make sure that here's the candidates that are gonna be sent to Chief Normanin or whoever for, for, or DPW. We have six candidates that have applied for the DPW job. They have all met these requirements. Rich, here are your six candidates. Rich is gonna interview. Rich is then gonna make a recommendation through HR. Nora, I recommended to the Town Manager, oh, we'll have a conversation, but we've already had this conversation that HR doesn't need to be in it. That's the way private business does it. When you go for a job, when I go, went for a job in private business, HR vetted you and just said, okay, what are your qualifications, what are you this, what do you have for benefits? I went before the managers of those departments, and those managers that go back hand you off back to HR. That's the way we're gonna operate the HR Department, the right way HR should be.
Okay. Council Lazo?
Um, my, just an opinion, I knew nothing about HR when I got on council, because I went private business. So I stopped and I talked to the gentleman who owns one of the manufacturing companies and had a discussion about, what is HR? HR is supposed to represent the employees, not the management. And I think what we're doing here is, is a good thing, because there's gonna be some overlap because of the job and the duty. But you're also gonna see going forward that you might see some changes on how we do payroll. Now payroll is an employee benefit, their pay. At the same time, the Town Manager manages the budget. Council votes it, and I mean, we can have a lot of clarification, but here's where I had a couple problems with the management position, which we've already agreed that was the wrong thing to do. Moving forward, I think that HR Department has to be standing up and making sure all the regulations, like Cap said, but the thing is, represent the employees, make sure their benefits are taken care of. Councilor Shu was sitting on a meeting on just insurance benefits that were paid that shouldn't have been paid from employees that weren't here. If you had a competent HR person, we would've never lost all that money. That's why it was an employee benefit that wasn't watched. Now all of a sudden we wanna change how we do this. That the HR is gonna be definitely a great assistance to the management team in the Town Hall, meaning the managing office, but it's all about the benefits. It's supposed to be an employee-driven position. Thank you.
Um, is there anybody else? I saw some hands earlier, uh, Citizen Member Clemens?
Thank you. I, I agree completely with the comments that are made, and the Town Manager seems to, this Town Manager seems to have a good handle. Um, again, I can only go back to history. Uh, we were good, and then we had a Town Manager who did not handle HR, and our HR assistants started to sit in on everything and also interject on everything. So the way you just described, the way things should be handled, makes sense, the way they were being handled back when two managers ago, um, were, was happening, what, things that were happening there with our, our former HR assistant. I, I was hearing it from employees, I was hearing it from union-type people, bargaining type, uh, bargaining areas when there were meetings happening, and that particular employee, because I imagine a lack of input from the Town Manager at the time, who didn't have that much experience truly, on any of that, um, it, there was too much interjection by somebody who should not have been interjecting. And so that in itself could've caused a lot of issues, um, in general. My understanding too is when that, that TM would, would say things, sometimes would say things that were legally not right to be said in front of people. Um, you don't ask a veteran about, uh, gun issues or something, anyway, it's a, a lot of things were said back then. So anyway, um, it's good, again, separation of jobs, separation of focus. Uh, to Council Marquetti's point, it, it is specific. It says preparation of annual budget as it relates to health insurance and employee benefits. So the job description has some specifics to it, 'cause, um, certainly we don't need the Town Manager dealing with that, we don't need HR dealing with, um, specifics to certain union bargaining type, um, avenues. That is what the Town Manager gets paid for, so... So, I mean, I think, I still think that's what we need in this community. We have a large population, it's not just the town employ- I mean, it's, it's all town employees, you're talking the school, we have the largest employer, you don't, we have, how many employees for the town? Do we have another?
Oh, how many town employees do we have?
I'm sorry?
Town employees, how many?
I don't know, I don't know.
Hundreds.
Well, ti- right, that's what I'm saying, are we, what, five, six, where, where are we at?
I think the town side maybe three hundred, and the school side is another five.
Right, so, and the hospital, and the hospital likes to say that's the biggest employer, but I think we're second.
No, there's a lot to it, too.
So, really, compliance, the fact that we haven't been sued, it's a good thing to have somebody in charge, so, whoever that, you know, ends up being, but certainly. Okay, that's all I got to say is important.
Thank you, those are great points, well said. Um, is there anybody else that has discussion? Uh, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to agenda item number seven, vote to recommend to Town Council the changes in the do- job description slash classification for Town Accountant A three to Town Accountant A six.
Sub move.
Okay, motion in a second. Um, do I have, Mr. Manager?
Uh, just on that, there is absolutely no change in the descriptions of anything in the job description. It was simply that when I was going through the records, it had that the accountant was an A three, and the accountant's classification is an A six, and I think it had to do with the fact that, uh, Karen was the accountant. Uh, so this is just to clean it up and to make sure going forward, because there has been, we know all the changes that have occurred in the past, the last two years or so, this is just to make sure it's clear. At the bottom, you'll see that it's revised on this date, approved when it goes to council, will be approved, and that will be the official document. So all it is, is changing A three to A six.
Is there any discussion? Council Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I don't understand this. According to Schedule One that I have, Town Accountant is A six.
That's what we changed it to, A six. The document itself is A three that we have on file, so I'm just making it...
I'm looking at, wasn't this voted on before?
We're not talking about the schedule. This, this has nothing to do with the schedule, it has to do with this job description right here. Town Accountant, it says A three at the top, and it's approved by council in seventeen, A, a Town Accountant is A six, so I'm A three.
More of a clerical error, cleanup.
To clean it up.
Any other dis- any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number eight, vote to recommend to Town Council the changes in the job description slash classification for Director of Finance slash Town Accountant, A three to Director of Finance, A three.
Sub move.
Second.
So again, we, uh, this is just, again, a clerical, um, so the, the one in two thousand and seventeen had its Director of Finance Town Accountant A three, which was Karen's position. This is just simply to say, um, that you have a Director of Finance, and that category is A three with the duties of Director of Finance, just taken out of what the Director of Finance duties are.
Okay.
So this will be changed in the document that goes up for our Town Council? Take a job description out of the agenda?
No, just, um, no, there's a Director of Finance.
No, I mean, the agenda says job description slash classification. You're saying it's just the classification you're changing?
Well, it's, we're getting rid of Director of Finance Town Accountant A three to just Director of Finance A three.
Not a job description.
There is a job description for Director of Finance.
I mean, you're not changing that.
No, no, we're just...
Okay. Mr. Steve?
Quick question, just clarification, if I understand it from having seen Mr. Peter. If I'm not mistaken, the, the Director of Finance is an add-on to some other job.
Correct.
So then, so then, why would it be as, as a stipend, why would it actually be higher than most of the other jobs that you'd be in? 'Cause it's, what you're really doing is you, you are stipending either the accountant or the treasurer of collections, whoever it is.
Or somebody else.
Or, could be, could be somebody else, could be somebody else, yes, that's true.
So it's a stipend position, and according to the job, uh, according to Schedule One, like Director of Finance is at A three.
What's the pay scale for Director of Finance?
Thirteen thousand sixty dollars, it's just a stipend position, but it's on the scholars' schedule with A three. So it's simply just put in Director of Finance, and put, add an A three to it.
Consider it higher?
Yeah.
Right. Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number nine, review the Town Manager's appointment of Nora Elgudary as the Director of Human Resources effective immediately, state of ethics and good standing. Entertain a motion of the Town Council to recommend confirmation or take reaction therefore.
Sub move.
So, as you were, Nora's worked for the town for a number of years. She first started as the Executive Secretary for the Town Manager's Office. Um, she then moved over to the Human Resources Department. In that time, she has been a very important, uh, person in the HR Department, is very knowledgeable of the town and the processes. Every single department head has supported Nora, and stated that based on all the interactions that she is, um, a very strong person to serve in the Director of Human Resources, and also, uh, in conversations with the school department as well. So our recommendation is to have her as the Director of Human Resources, um, effectively upon confirmation.
Okay, um, Council Dow?
Thank you, Chair, through you. Thank you, Nora, for coming forward for that job. Uh, you're doing a great job, keep, keep going. Thank you.
And just to add on, also, it wasn't just my recommendation, Charlie had also, uh, recommended in his tenure that he has worked with Nora, that, uh, um, his recommendation should, that she should stay in that role as well.
I, I think she, uh, represents herself, you know, I think nobody's gonna... She's good.
All set, Council?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Council Lazo?
Yeah, um, I thank you for stepping up. Um, after the last few years, I have to say that bringing you forward would be putting on a seat integrity back into that position. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Go, go ahead.
Council Marquetti?
How are you?
Citizen Member Clemens?
I just wanted to, to throw my support as well, only from the fact that I knew Nora mostly from when she took over from our previous admin's, um, position in the Town Manager's Office, and how seamlessly she seemed to be, just evolve into that position and was always pleasant and, and approachable and, and tried to help everybody that went in. So I, I feel like those are the types of qualities, the ability to, to function at a high level and to be able to multitask, uh, without a, without a blink, pretty much. Um, those are the types of qualities in HR that you really need to be able to work with different types of personalities. Um, and we know we have lots of personalities in this, in this community and Town Hall. Um, so I think, uh, certainly she, she possesses, possesses those skills and those traits for an HR position, but that's, again, just my opinion, so...
That's worth being a lot.
Thank you. Um, all right, uh, Council Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So I don't really know Nora very well, I mean, I, I know that she was a Town Manager's Secretary, and that's the only interaction that I had with her. But when I look at this, I look at the Director of Human Resources, the minimum qualification is what I look at. A bachelor's degree in public administration, business administration, human resources or related field, a further equivalent combination of education certification experience. And then I look at Nora's qualifications, and she has an associate's degree in early childhood development or education. So I'm not quite sure how, what her education qualifications are, or how that transfers into this job requirement. So is there something that you are seeing there that maybe I don't see, and maybe you think that this person would be qualified for this position?
Well, I, combination of experience and, uh, her overall, I've, we've all worked, well, I worked with Nora since she was hired for Yvonne's secretary, but also she is pursuing her degree in organizational management, so she is in a bachelor's program for organizational management career. So that's, so she's going for management degree now.
So, I mean, but her experience, from what I'm seeing here, she was one, one year in HR, one year for the Town Manager, one year with PEG, and then the rest of the time was at Hawaii, working in food, uh, food programs.
Program director.
So I'm seeing that that's the whole, well, uh, experience that you're talking about. Again, I don't really know Nora, so maybe there's something that you see here that I don't see.
Absolutely, I see, I see an individual that's very driven, that has a lot of great qualities, um, that is a, a team player, but most importantly, when you look at, she was with PEG for a year and then executive. She was recruited from CDBG to go up to the executive assistant for the Town Manager. All right, so it wasn't, and that, they saw the qualities that she had, great qualities to be an executive assistant. I know Nora's, uh, path is that she'd like to get into town management someday, so that is her career path, and I, there's no doubt that she'd be very capable of it. Uh, when she went from executive assistant to human resources, it was, again, to move and expand her development and her qualities, and she has outperformed, um, those expectations. Just my knowledge of her, and I take feedback from all department heads that talk about her qualities and the assistance that she gives her, uh, there, those departments, and that means a lot, because HR has to work very closely with all department heads, and every single department head, fire, police, DPW, have all spoken highly about her. And then when I mentioned to the school that my consideration that we're bringing her forward and said, hey, she is newer on HR, the school has a very, well, has an experienced HR person, and I said, and with Dr. Blau, we had a conversation, would it be okay for, and I, those two HR departments have to work together because they are all town employees, and they spoke very highly of Nora and, uh, what she has brought to the table, uh, stepping up from the previous HR Director. So you take all that together and knowing her experience and working with her in the past, I am very comfortable in, in making this appointment as HR Director. So you take all that together and knowing her experience and working with her in the past, I am very comfortable in, in making this appointment as HR director.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. You, uh, I've known Nora since she started this job, uh, down at CDBG. She's been great with the CDBG, if you don't understand that program, it's pretty difficult as well. And then to bring her up to, to replace Yvonne and at the same time then replace or be brand new in, in a new HR department that we, we created. You know, I think Miss Clements has brought it up too, is, is personality driven. The, the fact is she has that knowledge and she's going to continue to gain that knowledge and she's going to school and top it all. She has, she has the brainpower to continue to move forward and do great things for our town. And one area we don't want to mess up in, we talk about accounting, treasury and all that kind of stuff, is, is the HR department. There's so many laws and rules and regulations that we have to follow and she's got that experience and she's still continuing to learn this day. But her experience, you know, she's been here for a few, nine years now and her experience alone has surpassed those few years that she's been here. So I have no problem whatsoever, uh, recommending her or at least saying yes on my vote to, to bring her in as HR director. Her presence, her calm presence in there when there's chaos tells me a lot about that individual. And HR, HR area, you know, she's the most well-loved person around and somehow or another, she's convinced everybody based on her own per, her, herself that, that, uh, she's right for the job. And I, I really appreciate all the hard work she has done for this town, especially all the brand new stuff. So kudos for you for applying and I appreciate, I look forward to working with you in the future as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'd just like to say, you know, echoing all those comments especially, echoing all those comments. This is a, a team and, you know, the town manager said that the job description, it, it's not that she's doing all the work, it's her seat at the table for all these things. And I'll tell you, uh, I, I think the future of South Ridge, we're going up now. We were through some rocky waters in the last six to twelve months and there were a lot of different people's hands steering the ship the last six to twelve months, okay? A lot of hands changed, there's people in this room that are still have a hold of it. But I'll tell you, Nora's hand was on that, the steering wheel of that ship the whole time and it would have been much uglier if she hadn't been there. And I think she has proven just by the sheer fact that she's been doing the job for the last three months, that she's absolutely the fit for the job, uh, in my opinion. But if there's any other discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number ten, review the town manager's appointment of Darren Schmilk to the airport commission effective immediately Ju- until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six upon completion of state ethics. Entertain a motion to town council to recommend confirmation or take any action therefore.
Okay, so Darren had submitted a letter to the interim town manager, to Blanchard, on August twenty-second, uh, stating that he was interested in any openings that we have. He is an out-of-town resident, we do have, um, by the town bylaws, uh, the ability to put an out-of-town resident on that. When this came forward, I reached out to Rick Clements, who's the chair of the airport commission and said, hey, do you know this person? He spoke very highly of Darren, said Darren has been up there, Darren moves along, he has, uh, so then I asked Darren to come in and meet with me personally to talk about, um, this appointment. He came in last week, met with me, uh, spoke, uh, he's had two planes up there, uh, he's been working up in the airport for a long time. And, uh, Ron Plufow, I'll talk to him, so they, they both, everybody from what I've spoken to, uh, wished to, uh, have him appointed to the airport commission.
That's great, thank you. Counselor Marketti?
I just was curious, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I wanted the table first, I was just pointing, you're, you're good.
Oh, all right. Didn't we have someone else on the committee that was for out-of-town?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then there was a conflict of interest, there was not.
Silverbridge?
Yeah, yeah, there was a bit of a disagreement, but.
Okay, so, so he's just replacing this.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily mean that we have an out-of-towner, but if an out-of-towner that participates in the airport wishes to be on it, gave us the ability to have it on, just one, yeah. With the bylaw change a couple of years ago on that.
Yeah.
All set? Counselor Shenier?
I'm in, uh, so there's nobody presently on the commission that are, uh, out-of-town residents?
No.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Uh, agenda item number eleven, review the town manager's appointment of Robert Caprera of Caprera and Caparera as special town attorney for limited matters involving the board of health, inspections department and related matters effective immediately. Entertain a motion of the town council to recommend confirmation or take any action therefore.
So.
Yes, Mr. Manager.
Uh, so this request came out of the inspections department, uh, Attorney Caprera had done previous work for the, on housing and blight and that and he had taken a leave, uh, under the former town manager, um, but, uh, he would like to re, uh, well, so inspections asked, I reached out to Attorney Caprera. Attorney Caprera submitted a letter stating that he would. That rate is, uh, below the rate that we currently pay, a couple minute page, so, uh, that, that is the rate. And he's eager to, uh, to do that, we did have a current, what's that?
Nothing.
Yeah.
Just talking myself.
I did hear you though.
Thank you.
And as a matter of fact, and we'll bring this up later, I did have a meeting today with, uh, the inspections department and, uh, the building, uh, department about blighted properties and some tax title properties and what we're going to do with some of those. So they would welcome Attorney Caprera to serve in this capacity.
Excellent, is there anybody who has discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number twelve. Review discuss the town manager transfer request for fifty-one dollars from account number zero zero one 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 dash five seven eight zero 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 miscellaneous expenses to account number zero zero one 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 dash five seven three zero 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 dues and subscriptions to decou- to cover MMA subscription renewal. Entertain a motion to town council to recommend approval.
So.
Okay, so you'll see this was signed by Charlie Blanchard, I found this on the desk in a file folder that said for town council. Uh, not my desk, it was actually on the executive assistant that hasn't been there, so this transfer hasn't gone through. And this is something I think when we build the budget for next year, we have to look at because I think every year, am I right?
Right.
Everything, so, every year we have MMA subscription increase for about the same amount because they automatically use it probably three percent. And so, um, or whatever the percentage is.
A little more.
Yeah, so we'll, uh, we'll make sure we take care of it, but, uh.
My only question, is this for FY twenty-four, FY twenty?
This is for this year's due.
For this year, gotcha, okay. Um, anybody have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number thirteen is review.
Can I ask this one question, Manager?
Yes, Mr., uh, Counselor, uh.
Would there have been somewhere else within your budget that was approved where you could have found fifty-one dollars?
Probably, so where did it come from?
You know, like anything, toilet paper or something. He could have, he could potentially, right?
Oh, potentially, yes, I could have done it myself and that's what it is then, too.
Yeah, I suggest.
Just saying, just saying.
Thank you.
In turn to Karen, okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Shenier, if I may, it's up to you whether you want to take the next two, I realized tonight because, uh, Counselor Adams brought it up. These two were added, uh, towards the end of the day on, uh, uh, Wednesday, I believe it was, or Thursday, when we were putting the agenda items together and then Gail was out, uh, and, um, evidently I didn't get the transfer request, we talked about what the transfers were, but I did not get the actual transfer request from Christine for the transfers. So I don't have transfer forms attached for these two items, so I.
Well, if you're ready for the council meeting?
I can get them ready for the council meeting.
I don't want to go into it on having those in?
Yeah.
All right, so thank you for that, uh, Mr. Manager, so I will begin. Uh, agenda item number thirteen, review discuss town manager transfer request from, for eleven hundred dollars from account number zero zero one one three two dash five seven eight one zero zero town council reserve to account number zero zero one one two three dash five three four one zero zero advertising and promotions to cover, ensure funds are available to cover remaining balance of FY twenty-three invoice without fully depleting the account. Entertain a motion to town council to recommend approval.
So.
I, I would respectfully, I request, actually, I would like to postpone those to a different, to a next meeting of general government because I really have to get a little better explanation from the finance.
Would you like to postpone both thirteen and fourteen?
Both, both of them, yeah, so I can, huh?
I'd like to speak to this first before I postpone it because I think that is a good idea to postpone it, I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, if you want to speak to it.
There's no information here about what this invoice is.
Right, that's what I.
The other thing is if we're paying a previous.
It would be a two-thirds, well.
Two-thirds.
Yeah, yeah, so Christine's in the process of closing out the books, so she, we've been doing this.
Are you making motion to postpone thirteen and fourteen, Counselor Marketti?
I was making, so I don't, you, well, I didn't, you didn't have a person, I was still on the, where do you want this to be, this comp, this question I have?
Well, since nobody's, nobody seconded the postponement, so if you would, um, sure.
So my only concern is, I know that because of the lack of the help or whatever, we've been behind on many things. I've heard it out in the community. I don't, we all don't know what these are for, advertising, promotion, something, but it could be some business locally that's waiting to get paid, it could be anybody. I still think it's not a big deal as long as, because you can vote no at the council meeting, that's what council does. I do feel like somebody could be waiting for this money and waiting another meeting and another council meeting after that is three weeks out at least or they're about, or whatever, depending, whatever he does, you could go next week. So in the, in the, you know, in the goodwill of, of moving things along somewhat, you can always vote no at the council meeting and say not until we have more information, not until whatever, not until, you can postpone it then, but since council's coming up.
I, I can get you the information out tomorrow, so if you vote it contingent on.
Sure, so let me just ask you, uh, uh, rough, like, what is this eleven hundred for?
God, it's rough, smoothly.
Smoothly, thank you, Counselor Dow. What, what, what is this, uh?
I honestly, she had a conversation that she said she had a couple bills that were.
It's just a couple outstanding bills from last FY twenty-three?
She's closing out the books for FY twenty-three, so it was probably not enough, so that somebody submitted an invoice and they encumbered the money, but there's not enough money in that encumbrance, the bill probably came in higher than.
Understood.
Well, a couple dollars, I could, you know, who knows what it is, yeah.
So.
So, Counselor Dow.
Thank you, so I make a motion to move the two agenda to the town council, uh, who can check then on the rest of the information to come through.
So we got a, we have a mo- we have a motion in a second on the floor for this item, so we could just vote on it, uh, but it, and it's contingent, sure. I don't think we need to amend the, the motion to say contingent. It, it's obvious that we're going to be looking for the information in the packet Monday and I'm sure we'll have it before then. Um, so, um, is that, there's no further discussion? All those in favor?
We don't know what is.
Opposed, unanimous of all present.
The council handle it.
Okay. Well, we have to vote properly, so agenda item number fourteen is review and discuss a request to use eleven hundred forty-six dollars and twenty cents in FY twenty-four funds from account number zero zero one one two three dash five three four one zero zero advertising and promotions to pay remaining difference of the June FY twenty-three invoice balance, not covered by remaining funds in account and FY twenty-three encumbrance on purchase order number two oh two three three, three three four. Entertain a motion to town council to recommend for approval.
Oh.
Second.
Okay, and.
That one's got a PO number, so. That's got something.
And again, Mr. Manager, I'm, I'm gonna assume this is the same sort of situation, you will, you will fill us in, it is an old bill. Um, and I was, I would encourage that we, we recommend so we can handle it next Monday. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present?
And I'll get the information, I'll email it to everybody tomorrow.
Absolutely, that sounds great.
I'll just want to say, it was one thing.
Yes.
I tried so hard to make sure that this general government, the general item was perfect because it was Council, former Council Clements and Counselor Marketti. And I still feel, I apologize.
Well, you hold them in such high regard, it's wonderful.
If I may, before, before you're done, because you look like you want to vote no. Just, again, this is something that comes up today, the, the meeting is next Monday. Granted, at least it's a week away, sometimes it's a Wednesday and it's Monday. If we can, I know it's going to take a while, but a learning curve, especially with all the new people that are coming in, that they try to be more in align, you know, the month, the weeks before, months before, not. When things are approaching, they need to have some sort of operations management situation go out in their office, like, knowing things are coming up ahead and not waiting so close. So that, so that council, so as a subcommittee, you know, there should be time when we say, Mr. Manager, we don't get it, we're not voting on it.
I agree.
You know.
I'm sure that's the goal.
Yeah, no, well, I'm just saying, it's something that is, they lost.
Right.
And you need to instill it again, is all, just a, just a suggestion.
I'm excited.
Oh, I, you're, no, you're, you're absolutely right because it, it really, um, and again, it's, it's, we're closing out those books, so I think.
Right.
And, and because everything got so delayed in that office, like you said, and vendors have to be paid, she's trying to get everything out as quick as possible, so.
Look at it.
The job.
Uh, well, hold on a second, there's another item. Agenda item number fifteen is future agenda and upcoming meetings. Uh, on here it says subcommittee meeting minutes in Otter AI. Uh, I was blessed to have, uh, Susan do the last couple minutes, so I have not yet fiddled with Otter AI, but Counselor Adams said it didn't work as well as we thought, I believe, it was you, somebody used it, I'm sorry, it must have been Mr. Counselor Marketti. Um, so I will get back to you on my experience with it after doing these minutes. Um, and then discussion of the next meeting day, um, Counselor Marketti, when is the next, uh, town council meeting? Is it after Columbus Day, do you have the date off the top of your head? Are we, two weeks, uh, two weeks after the next one?
Our next town council meeting?
After the twenty-fifth. The Octo- okay, but you're, assuming you're probably going to have a general government meeting again before.
Well, Columbus is the ninth.
The, uh, October, the first meeting in October, you'll probably want to have another.
Should be October ninth.
The ninth is Columbus Day, so it's going to have to be the second, well, then you're gonna have to have two in a row at some point.
Sixteenth right now.
Uh, yeah, Counselor Marketti?
So sixteenth and thirtieth, yeah.
I think you should consider having a meeting the same as a town council meeting, that's why.
Why?
There may be some things on the town council meeting that we would want to discuss at general government, I'm not sure, but there might.
What do you mean?
Well, I don't know.
For the October meeting?
For the September twenty-fifth meeting. Is there anything going to be on that meeting that we, we should be discussing?
All of this?
Well, good, would that do us to do?
Is there anything else?
Yeah, it's the three items.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Why would you do that?
That's just going right to court, that was the agreement.
Well, we, we could have a meeting that night.
This is just, this, I'm just going to limit this, this discussion to the discussion of the next meeting date, so.
But I'm not done yet, there are some things that I would like to see discussed at future meetings as well.
Okay.
So I think that one thing I, I think we should start a discussion on salaries in this town. Uh, we don't need that fifty thousand dollar study, but we should start taking a look at the salaries of our employees and town so we don't have so many people leaving or.
Absolutely, yeah. And you had told me that exit policy.
I also think, I don't know if we need an exit policy, an employee exit policy, but I would like to start the discussion about who do we have? Who should we designate as the one person that every, and all department heads follow this?
HR.
And maybe it's just something that you can tell them, maybe we don't need a policy, I don't know, but. So we don't end up overpaying a hundred thousand dollars in insurance to people who have left. Because it seems to me, we don't have one person in charge of all that and so we don't even know who left, what department it was, and no one knew about it.
Okay, so, uh, hold, just a second here. I get, I hear you, exit policy, I don't want to discuss it right now, I want to write in my notes that that's what you want in a future meeting, so I don't want to discuss it.
I'm not discussing it.
A discussion about the capital budget, all the funds that we have sitting around that have not been used.
Capital budget cleanup.
Budget stabilization, royalty funds, there are a lot of money, I would like us to start taking a look at that and see if we can get some of that funds, funding for, we have a lot of things going on. We have a fire station that needs funding, so I, we have roads, so I would like us to start taking a look at that and clean it up. Taking a good look at it and cleaning them out, some of them go back to two thousand and fifteen and I don't, I know, I don't want to discuss it either.
Yeah, no, I, I totally agree with you.
But I would like it on a future.
So, and just because it's a future agenda.
That point?
Yeah.
Mr. Marketti, one hundred percent of us.
Yes.
And I think Mr. Jovan, myself, staff, everybody understands two things right now. HR and finance department, it's the priority, the heartbeat, the blood flowing down, and we need to straighten that out. And then we can get all those answers, he's absolutely correct.
Well, just, yes. We, we do have that on the radar and that's why we hired somebody to come in and assist in the end of the year report and look at all those accounts so that we can come to council and say, this is what we have, this is where it's at, and make those good decisions. So it is, it is being worked on.
That's good.
And I, I can't tell you the date, but the end of the year, those people are coming in Friday and they're going to start working on that, so.
Very good.
We've been very aggressive to bring this all together.
Thank you, and, uh, Citizen Member Clements?
It's just, just to Counselor Marketti's request and point, in terms of salaries and such. It, and we had a discussion ourselves even, that it comes from HR basically, that, or that, that it comes from management for certain. for certain decisions on things. I don't disagree that it should be brought up here and we should explain to, but that rather than us sit down and have a meeting of something that makes no sense, it need, it needs to be requested to whoever's in charge of that then to set up when's the best for you in the next month, two months. I mean, obviously, things are new, finance is new, HR's, you know, getting, ramping up and all that because they've been without much help. Find out what's good for everybody and bring the people in with what we're looking for. So think about the things you would like answered. Let's not have a meeting where we can't get any answers. That's not a productive meeting. You have a meeting in which you've posed some questions that hopefully they can come with answers to. So start that way, not the other way.
Absolutely.
Cause we don't throw rocks at them, we, you know, catch them when they throw them back at us or something. I mean, it's baseball.
Okay.
So I would just suggest, same with the capital budget stuff, obviously the accounting's been a problem clearly right now to ask somebody who's trying to close out funds to, by the way, what else is going on?
It's exciting future, exciting future.
But I, I can't wait to hear about them.
To you, one comment before I adjourn. Thank you. Are you smiling? The meeting is awesome. You fit right on that table, you know, we thought we were going to lose.
Oh, you're blushing. All right, wait for Jared. Second, all those in favor? Thank you, it is eight twenty-two PM.